Welcome to the Santa Clara County Emergency Medical Services Agency's public hearing on the announced reduction of services at Regional Medical Center of San Jose. My name is John Mills and I'm a deputy county executive for the county of Santa Clara with responsibility for the Emergency Medical Services Agency. This hearing is being held to hear from stakeholders and the public regarding Regional's announced reduction in services pursuant to requirements under the Health and Safety Code and EMS policy. Just to be clear upfront, the county EMS agency is not the decision maker regarding regional medical centers' reduction in services and does not have the power to approve or disapprove that change. The purpose of this hearing is to receive input on the local impact of the services reduction and to provide that input to the state of California in the form of an impact assessment report. Unlike meetings of the Board of Supervisors, this hearing is not a legislative body meeting subject to the Brown Act, and therefore this hearing is not subject to Brown Act procedures and open meeting requirements. That being said, we will be providing a fair and ample opportunity for input from the public. Following stakeholder presentations, members of the public who wish to speak will get three minutes each. And as I mentioned earlier, and I apologize for repeating myself for those of you who already heard this announcement, for those of you in chambers, there are yellow speaker cards available here at the podium or on the back table. If you'd like to speak, please complete a speaker card and submit it to the clerk who is sitting in the back, and we'll collect those so that we know that you wish to speak. And anyone who's participating in the hearing remotely via Zoom, please raise your hand if you intend to speak at the public comment period. The hearing has a hard stop at 5:00 PM, so it is possible that not everyone who wishes to speak will get an opportunity to do so, but I want to reassure everyone that written comments may also be submitted to the EMS agency for consideration when drafting the impact report. Next, we will hear an overview of the impact assessment process and timeline, followed by comments from Regional Medical Center, Santa Clara Valley Healthcare, and any other system stakeholders, and then the public. First, I will ask everyone on the dais to introduce themselves, and I'll start to my
Jackie Lauder, EMS Director.
Karen Miller, EMS Medical Director.
Lisa Vagat Smith, Specialty Programs Nurse Coordinator.
And then to my right.
Wesley Dodd, Deputy County Counsel.
Tavi Thunder Ryan, Chief Assistant County Counsel.
And now I will turn it over to Lisa for an overview of the impact assessment process and timeline.
My role at EMS is to coordinate and manage the specialty programs with the hospitals and systems stakeholders. I'm going to walk through this assessment process so people have a clearer understanding of what EMS's role is and the next steps in this reduction notification. As John Mills mentioned, this is under California Health and Safety Code that the EMS agency must conduct an impact assessment and hold at least one public hearing within 60 days of receiving notification from hospitals electing to reduce services. The assessment must evaluate how the change in service will affect emergency services providers, hospitals, and the community while also presenting strategies to ease the impact. The assessment must include the public hearing comments and provide any recommendations to the state. Shortly after the report is submitted to the state, it will be made available to system stakeholders and the public. The EMS agency will meet with system stakeholders most impacted by these changes to discuss the mitigation strategies prior to the reduction of services occurring. As of now, August 12, 2024, is when the service level changes at Regional Medical Center will occur. After this time, the EMS agency, along with system stakeholders, will continue to monitor this system while also developing evaluation metrics within each of the specialty programs to assess the impacts to the health system and the community. Before we begin the public comment section, I'd like to provide a brief overview of these specialty programs and how the changes will shift patient volume in the county. I'm going to present a series of maps, and I just want to explain the color coding on them real quick. The darker areas will indicate where cases originated within neighborhoods in and around Regional Medical Center, and then the lighter areas represent where fewer cases actually came to their hospital from those communities. Each system has its own map to indicate where those communities are impacted the most. Regional Medical Center is the most eastern hospital in the county, offering services to a population of just under 1 million people. They are one of 10 hospitals which also participate in the specialty programs administered by Santa Clara County Emergency Agency. These services include the trauma, stroke, and ST elevation myocardial infarction, also known as STEMI, which is a more serious type of heart attack programs. The goal of these programs are to coordinate and improve the care of patients when they experience illness at home and transition to the emergency department and the hospital. Currently, the EMS agency has designated Regional Medical Center as an adult trauma center, a STEMI-receiving center, and a comprehensive stroke center. On August 12, the services will transition to no longer receive ambulances that have triage patients for trauma or STEMI and will only take certain types of stroke patients for evaluation. Patients that self-present to their emergency department will require care for these services will be stabilized and then transferred to other hospitals. A primary stroke center typically focuses on the initial stabilization and treatment of stroke patients before transferring them, if necessary, to a higher level of care for more specialized interventions. They offer timely diagnosis and treatment by administration of clot-busting medications known as thrombolytics and management of stroke cases with specialized trained staff. All 10 hospitals in Santa Clara County meet the requirements to provide basic yet essential stroke services. While a comprehensive stroke center offers a more extensive range of services, including advanced interventions such as endovascular procedures, known as a thrombectomy, and neurosurgical interventions. They are equipped with specialized resources, including advanced imaging technologies and dedicated stroke teams capable of providing 24/7 comprehensive stroke coverage. The wider range of services includes specialized rehabilitation programs and long-term care for stroke survivors. Typically, they serve as regional referral centers, accepting complex stroke cases from primary stroke centers and other healthcare facilities throughout the region. In Santa Clara County, there are three comprehensive stroke centers indicated on the map in the triangle, not the diamonds. They are Stanford Health, Kinsamara Inn, and actually Regional Medical Center being the third. In addition, El Camino Health of Mountain View and Kaiser Santa Clara can manage endovascular thrombectomy cases. The reduction of Regional Medical Center stroke status will shift all advanced stroke care west to these four facilities. A STEMI, also known as a ST segment elevation myocardial infarction receiving center, is equipped to rapidly diagnose and treat patients experiencing a specific type of heart attack. These centers are designated to rapidly identify STEMI patients, have protocols in place to provide prompt or emergent percutaneous coronary intervention, also known as an angioplasty with stenting. This is done to restore blood flow to the blocked artery in the heart, and it is the preferred treatment for this type of heart attack. They also have highly trained healthcare professionals, including cardiologists and nurses, who are proficient in the management of other types of heart attacks and cardiological disorders. The primary goal of a STEMI center is to coordinate with emergency medical services to expedite transport to the transition of care for immediate intervention upon arrival, thereby reducing the risk of complications and improving patient outcomes. After August 12, there will only be seven STEMI centers in Santa Clara County. The next closest facility will be O'Connor Hospital. And lastly, the trauma center serves a critical hub within the healthcare system, specializing in immediate and comprehensive care of individuals who have sustained severe injuries or trauma. These centers are equipped with personnel, resources, and infrastructure to provide rapid assessment, stabilization, and treatment across a wide range of traumatic injuries, including those from accidents, violence, or medical emergencies. The primary goal of a trauma center is to deliver timely multidisciplinary care to improve patient outcomes and minimize the long-term impacts of traumatic injuries. Santa Clara County has established a robust trauma system involving Stanford, Santa Clara Valley Medical Center, and Regional Medical Center. They are geographically positioned to serve the population, reducing transport times and improving outcomes. Eliminating Regional Medical Center will shift trauma volume mostly to Santa Clara Valley Medical Center. As reviewed on the service area maps, the primary impact from the reduction of STEMI, trauma, and stroke services will be the movement of patients from the geographical service areas of Regional Medical Center to other hospitals in the county offering these services. All comprehensive care will be located on the west side of the county, leaving minimal resources to the eastern and southern portions. Ambulances transporting patients will experience greater drive times. In ideal traffic conditions, these increases will be, on average, 20 to 25 minutes. Family members will need to navigate away from their homes to these more distant locations to visit loved ones and/or manage follow-up care. There will be increased patient volume at all other hospitals most impactful to those near Regional Medical Center. With the conclusion of the assessment, the EMS agency and system stakeholders will have a more detailed understanding of the impacts. Planning with system stakeholders will continue over the next several months, with an emphasis on ensuring that patients in Santa Clara County continue to receive high-quality, efficient emergency care. Lastly, I want to take the opportunity to remind the community the best way to access emergency care, especially if you believe you or a loved one are experiencing a heart attack or a stroke, is to call 911 regardless of where you are. First responders will provide medical care and ensure you are taken to the hospital with the services needed for continued evaluation and care.
Thank you, Lisa, for that overview of the impact assessment process and timeline. Now, in our hearing agenda, we were going to hear from a representative from Regional Medical Center. So if you're here, please feel free to come forward. If you'd like, you may sit at one of the staff tables, or you may speak at the podium, whichever you prefer.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So my name is Nanette Logan. I am the chief operating officer at Regional Medical Center. I'm also a nurse, and I've been in healthcare leadership for 16 years. In my role, I'm responsible for overseeing the daily operations and supporting the strategic direction of our hospital. Regional Medical Center has served East San Jose for 25 years, and we look forward to serving our community for many more years to come. On behalf of Regional Medical Center, we want to thank Santa Clara County for its partnership, collaboration, and engagement as we implement the necessary service changes as soon as possible for our community. In particular, Dr. Miller, Jackie Lauder, Lisa Vagat Smith, and John Mills each have helped us over the past few months to ensure that the minimal impact to patient care and to maintain Regional Medical Center as a viable anchor healthcare provider for our East San Jose community. Today, we are here to listen, learn, and to continue to understand the community's perspective on the impact of these service changes. Our doors will remain open to all patients in our community. We will continue evaluation, treatment, and stabilization of stroke and serious heart attack patients. Should a patient need higher level of care, we would transport those patients to other local facilities. We will continue to pursue our primary stroke center designation, and we are downsizing our Level 2 trauma designation due to our lower patient volumes, increased resource demands, and increased regulatory requirements that makes it unsustainable. We are also investing $10 million to expand our emergency department. Our beds will go from 43 beds to 63 beds, which is an increase that is reflected on the community needs. We understand these changes that may have an impact, in some cases may even be difficult. However, we encourage those who speak today to please recognize that we're making these changes so we can continue to care for our community's health sustainability for the long term. To be clear, we are here to listen, we are here to understand. Our team is committed to working closely with our Santa Clara County healthcare partners, our elected officials, our neighboring hospitals, and our nurses in positions to ensure the well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nanette, for that statement on behalf of Regional Medical Center. Now, I'm going to turn it over to the representatives who are here from Santa Clara Valley Healthcare. I understand that they also have a presentation that they would like to share as part of
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Brian Macbeth, Chief Quality Officer for Santa Clara Valley. I'm going to share my screen here in just a second. So thank you for the time and the opportunity to come here and share some perspective from our physician group. We have a few key points that we're going to emphasize here in this presentation. We have significant concerns about the impact that the reduction in services will bring. We see these services as critical to the community, and closure will directly and indirectly affect patient safety and outcomes. We are concerned about the delay to access to trauma services and the effect that care will have for those patients, longer transport times for EMS, delay in definitive care, and potentially increased morbidity and mortality. We think that the closure of these services will cause an immediate cascade of negative effects to other hospitals in the area, increased demand for transfers out of RMC, increased need for ambulances, longer ED wait times, congestion, and waits for limited specialty care. And we feel that our shared community and its most vulnerable members will be disproportionately affected by these closures. This is our panel. I'll introduce them one by one as they come up to speak from their different perspectives and areas of expertise. Again, I'm the Chief Quality Officer for Santa Clara Valley Healthcare. The maps that Lisa shared earlier are similar to this, showing the catchment of trauma patients, these are trauma discharges. RMC has a footprint that is east, and with removal of this as a trauma center, we will see a shift of almost all these patients over to Valley Medical Center, which is the catchment area on the right. I'm sure many of you have heard of the golden hour of trauma, and this represents a window of opportunity and care of patients who are acutely injured. And by that, we mean an opportunity for stabilization, for hemorrhage control, for transport, for early diagnosis, and ultimately definitive care. There's been research, a couple of papers are cited here, Renee Shaw's work at UCSF, and others that show delays in longer transport times associated with higher mortality, especially when it comes to hemorrhage control in shock. These numbers are small and maybe tough to read on the screen, but essentially, this is a look at the urban centers across our country and the number of trauma centers in each of the 15 largest centers. San Jose is highlighted in the red, and it's listed as three trauma centers, but we know there are two in the city itself. Stanford is far to the north in the county, and so realistically, patients in San Jose, Santa Clara, and the South County will come all to the Valley Medical Center with the elimination of Regional as a trauma center. There's no other urban center that has a comparable paucity of trauma access throughout the country. You'll see San Francisco has one trauma center, but it's a much smaller geographic footprint. And so we are not in good company for the lack of trauma centers. So we did some modeling around the numbers and how this will affect Valley Medical Center, and I encourage you to look at the right side of these columns to the mid and max projection. This assumes a 75% to 100% transfer of the trauma volume from Regional to Valley Med, and you see significant increases in cases per day, thousands of additional ICU days, med surg days, significant increase in OR volume. So this is also an increased need for specialty care, and you'll hear some of my colleagues speak to this. RMC will have less ability to stabilize and treat the acute patients. Their plan to increase their ED facility space to churn through more ED patients is flawed and will create significant safety concerns. So total admissions are going to go up. If you're seeing more ED patients, there's no reason to think that the admit rate's going to go down. So more patients means more admissions, more need for transfers with less ability to provide those services on scene. And these patients will quickly fill up RMC's ED and inpatient beds while they wait for care and transfer. Discharge patients, too, will be needing follow-up with specialists, and the impact on our ambulatory services will be significant. Longer wait times for clinics will compromise care as well. And again, I want to emphasize this will disproportionately be felt by the more vulnerable communities with which Santa Clara Valley Healthcare works. You will see effects on EMS, longer wait times, longer transport times, significant increases, we think, in ambulance patient offload time, so this is all going to affect EMS, and it's going to be a cascade effect across the county related to these services. This is my final slide, and I just want to emphasize the fact that we, as a healthcare system, Santa Clara Valley Healthcare embraces our role as the safety net, as the public hospital system. We are here for the entire community, and we are committed to providing safe and quality care to all patients who come through our doors. But we must say that the abrupt closure of these services places to go. And the timeline of August 12 is not adequate time for us to expand our capacity to accommodate the significantly increased demand. So we will need additional time to invest in resources, in facilities, staff, and infrastructure. I'm now going to ask Dr. Dan Nelson to speak. Dan, Dr. Nelson is the Chair of the Department of Emergency Medicine at Santa Clara Valley
So thank you very much for giving me the chance to speak with you today. As Brian stated, my name is Dan Nelson, and I'm an emergency physician. I'm the Chair of the Department of Emergency Medicine at Santa Clara Valley Medical Center, and I also coordinate all the emergency departments in Santa Clara Valley Healthcare, which includes O'Connor and St. Louis. I stand before you with deep concern regarding the recent announcement of the closure of the trauma STEMI and comprehensive stroke programs at Regional Medical Center of San Jose. Having spent four years previously working in the ED at RMC, two of those as the Assistant Medical Director, I understand both the hospital's challenges and the needs of that community. While specialty coverage has historically been a concern, the proposed closures are unlike anything I can remember. Working in a major urban emergency department without OB-GYN, GI, interventional cardiology, nephrology, comprehensive stroke services, trauma, and urology is utterly dystopian. The patients presenting to RMC will still require these services, placing enormous strain on the physicians working in that ED and further stretching the resources of Santa Clara Valley Healthcare. It thus goes without saying that this development poses a significant threat to our community, and it's crucial that we confront the challenges ahead with a sense of urgency. In our Santa Clara Valley Health EDs, we already deal with daily, record-breaking volumes of patients. The current lack of specialty services available at RMC at least partially drives this today. Our physician group began staffing the ED at Valley July 1, 2023. Since then, we've seen the daily number of patients increase by 9% in eight months, and since the beginning of 2023, we have seen the daily number of patients increase by 15% at St. Louis and 33% at O'Connor Hospital. Despite this, we have managed to improve efficiency and patient satisfaction metrics. However, the anticipated surge in patient volume threatens to undermine and frankly reverse these hard-won gains. Foremost among our concerns is ensuring equitable access to care for our community. Our EDs are already overburdened with patients who have true medical emergencies and those who do not but have nowhere else to go. We often find ourselves providing primary care beyond our traditional scope. We are also increasingly becoming the primary access point for specialized care due to the strain on our under-resourced specialists, coupled with the closure of critical programs at RMC, will dramatically increase the number of patients seeking care, emergency or otherwise, in our Santa Clara Valley Healthcare EDs. Moreover, our colleagues at O'Connor and St. Louis face a unique challenge that VMC does not. Due to the lack of a comprehensive specialist call panel at these facilities, patients requiring specialized medical care often have to be transferred. Unfortunately, the absence of available beds within Santa Clara Valley Healthcare and beyond is a frequent problem they encounter, sometimes for days. This issue is compounded by the current lack of ambulances in the system available to transport our patients in a timely manner. Traditionally, RMC has been the higher level of care destination for our sickest stroke patients from O'Connor and St. Louis. It is also the EMS-designated higher level of care destination for our sickest trauma patients being transferred from St. Louis. However, with RMC unable to accept our higher level of care transfers and conversely contributing to the demand for higher level of care acceptance, patients may be stranded without access to specialized care for even longer periods. This will also result in more 911 ambulances being called to perform emergent interfacility transport. Several measures need to be taken to handle the expected increase in patient volume safely. These include expanding clinical space within the ED, hiring more ED staff, including nurses, techs, and ancillary support, increasing the number of outpatient primary care and specialty clinics for follow-up, providing additional clinical support, such as more radiology and operating room capacity, and increasing specialist call coverage. All of this will take more time than we are currently being afforded. Without these changes, patients will experience longer wait times, more boarding in the emergency department, and longer offload times for ambulances, all of which have been shown to have a negative impact on patient outcomes. Thank you in advance for giving this matter the attention it demands, and let us work tirelessly to safeguard the health and well-being of our community and ensure that no one is left behind in pursuit of a healthier, more resilient future.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Dr. Praveen Anshala will speak next. He's the Medical Director of Radiology for Santa Clara Valley Healthcare and the Chair of Radiology at Santa Clara Valley Medical Center.
Thank you to the committee and to the public for allowing us to give some thoughts we have about the upcoming closure as it's currently planned. My name is Praveen Anshala. I'm a radiologist at Valley Medical Center. It's been there for about seven to eight years. I'm the Chair of Radiology of Valley Medical Center and the Medical Director for the Santa Clara Valley Healthcare Center and System. I think you'll hear from myself and multiple speakers as we go through this about the effect that a closure of such a large hospital magnitude trauma STEMI and the downgrade of the stroke center will affect us both as a hospital system and as a community. The volume influx that we are expecting to see, I think, can't be overstated. The numbers that we've seen are pretty staggering. The distance between our hospital and our system and Regional Medical Center will certainly lead to the majority of those patients coming directly to us. Radiology has multiple components along the healthcare chain. We have diagnostic imaging, which are things like X-ray, CT, MRI, and ultrasound, which are critical lifesaving measures in terms of diagnostic imaging to get patients where they need to be within the hospital. We also have interventional radiology, which is crucial to facilitate treatment of emergent portions of healthcare, like embolization of bleeding vessels and vasculature in organs, which are critical to trauma services, and the creation of a neuro-interventional system, which will hopefully in the future be able to provide thrombectomy services to the community. However, we aren't However, we aren't there yet with that. It's something that we've just recently started to try and undertake. The volume of studies that will come through in all of those phases are things that we cannot easily absorb. This isn't a situation where we have the capacity already available to take on these sorts of things. Valley Medical Center particularly is a trauma center that is extremely busy, as you've heard from Dr. Macbeth and Dr. Nelson already. The volumes that we've seen year over year in radiology are staggering. They continue to increase, not only in terms of number of patients, but number of studies per patients. The average patient who comes in with a trauma will get somewhere between ten to fifteen imaging examinations and studies. And that percentage and number keeps going up as as healthcare advancements are made. I think it's important to note that, you know, we're not looking at a pin in a map. This is something where patients are moving throughout our county in a way that they never used to be able to move, and they're coming to places that have higher access of care because of the type of care that can be offered. So the volume of studies and the amount of patients coming through the door, I think, can't be overstated. Additionally, the staffing requirements that that will involve, both in terms of doctors and technologists in radiology, you know, nurses within our more nursing-related fields, is is important to recognize, not only because of the immediate nature of the closures, but also the compounding effect it has on a healthcare system that's already strained throughout the the country, but also even within our county. You know, we are dealing with a recruiting nightmare in many areas of the hospital, just because of how difficult it is to find the number of people and the quality of people that's needed to provide this sort of high level of care. The amount of time and resources it takes to find those people who are both qualified and of a certain skill level takes longer than it used to. The the lead time to hire certain physicians and specialists can take up to a few years to do now. And it's something that that we need to really think about with how we would be able to expand services to take on such a big portion of trauma volume. The issues are not only staffing. One of the main bottlenecks that I would foresee is actually our equipment and facilities. Majority of our equipment, such as CT, MRI and X-rays, are already running at full capacity, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. There's simply not many places to fit more patients into that system. And expanding equipment, I mean, capital, capital equipment and assets like that require space, money, and most importantly, time. I think we all understand how how lengthy and difficult it is to make construction projects right now. They're not things that can just happen with the snap of our fingers within six months or at this point, less than six months. These are things that really take careful planning to do it right. I think most importantly, I would like to say that, you know, as a public safety net hospital, we are here for the community. We are here for our patients regardless of 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 where they come from or or their ability to pay. We will always be here for those patients. We're going to stand behind them no matter what it takes. Everything our doctors can give, everything our nurses can give and technologists can give to throw at this, we will try our best. But I really would like to sound the alarm on the effect that this is not going to be easy. It may not even be something that's possible in our current system.
Thank you, Dr. Anshala. I'd like to ask Dr. Adela Garland, our Trauma Medical Director from Valley Medical Center, to speak next.
Good afternoon. I have been Trauma Medical Director at VMC for just over ten years and have been a working surgeon at VMC for twenty-five years this August. And I am dedicated to my trauma program and our patients. I would like to first say that we are absolutely dedicated to the care of everyone in our community for all their surgical needs, including trauma. Having said that, there are very real and far-reaching effects from the closure of Regional Medical Center to trauma care. This closing will impact the broader community, but it will, as you've heard, disproportionately affect the most vulnerable in our community who are currently served at RMC. Closure of trauma services puts individuals in that community at risk for increased mortality from injury. Both time to definitive care and transport times to a trauma center from the scene have been shown to adversely affect trauma outcomes. Those trauma patients who present to RMC after the closure, the so-called walk-ins, will be stabilized and transferred for definitive care, and at least some trauma patients will have a longer field transport time. Both groups are exposed to the potentially avoidable risk of increased mortality. In short, their golden hour is ticking away, and it will result in them arriving with more physiologic derangements, requiring more resuscitation and intensive care and monitoring. We're grateful to the thoughtful initial plan that was presented to us by Dr. Miller and the EMS agency that takes into account both the geography and the acuity of patients in making critical field decisions for destination. Remember also that trauma care is multidisciplinary care. It touches every part of a hospital, as you've heard from our previous speakers, with staff requirements spelled out by the American College of Surgeons Committee on Trauma in a book called The Optimal Resources for the Care of the Injured Patients. This is the book by which we are verified, and we are required to provide the services at the levels that are recommended in that in that text. Additional administrative and clinical resources, including physicians, nurses, technicians, social workers and so on, will be required with the increased volume, and they will take time to train and hire. It all takes time and resources, unfortunately. Nonetheless, we are committed to provide this care in the most cost-effective manner, but will present our needs to our governing body, the Board of Supervisors, Health and Hospital Committees, in the most realistic, honest and transparent manners. The increased volume, as you heard, will affect both inpatient and outpatient care. The ED is strained in terms of space and will require additional personnel, resources and infrastructure to be able to provide this care in a timely manner. Radiology alone, as you've just heard, will have increasing amounts of patients requiring both advanced and plain imaging, plain film imaging. We estimate that based on the modeling for increased number of patients, that there will be anything from one to two thousand additional patients getting up to five CT scans and ten or more studies in order to diagnose and make medical decisions on their care. The OR will see an increase in immediate initial emergent ORs, particularly because Regional Medical Center is in an area that has the potential to double our patients who have penetrating trauma. These are the most resource-dependent patients in the first twenty-four hours of care, and the patients who increase travel times will affect most poignantly. The ICU will both have the increased volume just from the volume changes, but also has the potential to have sicker patients and increasing ICU days beyond what we, what the modeling would indicate based on their physiologic derangement. Inpatient wards will also be affected. They will have increased admissions in a system where they are often at capacity on a daily, a weekly if not daily basis. As we see more trauma patients, the outpatient setting will also be affected. By our contract with our designating agency, which is our local EMS agency, we must give follow-up care to injured patients who are within our system for ninety days after injury. That leaves fewer openings for non-acute, non-urgent, but no less important surgical needs of the broader community. We are dedicated to giving the optimal care to each and every patient within this community who needs it. But we will need resources for staff and infrastructure as well as time in order to provide these resources. I am grateful to our hospital administration as well as to our governing body, the Board of Supervisors and our EMS agency, for the collaborative efforts that they put forth to helping us provide the best, optimal and state-of-the-art care for our our trauma patients. And I thank you all for the support over the years for our trauma program. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Garland. Next, I would like to ask Dr. Tiffany Castillo, our Chair of Orthopedic Surgery from Valley Medical Center, to speak.
Hello, good afternoon. Tiffany Castillo, so I'm an orthopedic surgeon by board certification. I'm a hip and knee specialist, but I have known the Valley for a very long time. I was a medical student with Dr. Garland many years ago from Stanford. Did my Stanford residency, also spent a lot of time at the Valley and was fortunate enough to come back and be on faculty since twenty seventeen. So I come to you today also very, very concerned about how this is going to impact us. We are already at capacity. We're already in the position where we have fewer anesthesiologists than we'd like. So we're routinely rolling cases that are not urgent or emergent. And so those are loved ones. Those are people with hip fractures, ankle fractures, long bone fractures, who are potentially sitting in traction longer than we'd like, not having their hips fixed within forty-eight hours, which is a standard of care. These things concern me. I have a hard time going to sleep at night when I know that people aren't getting the highest quality of care as it is. So knowing that we're going to lose a partner in treating these patients urgently and urgently is going to create a huge strain on our system and us as people who take pride in providing the best care for our patients. Over the last couple of weeks, I'll tell you that we've already seen the effects of loss of services when there was not vascular surgery available at Regional Medical Center. We had several transports come to us. Someone with a mangled open extremity had a partner work all night long to save a limb. That person ultimately left our system. Day later, we get another one. So these are resources that are not only displacing other people within our hospital, but also consuming a lot of time for a very limited amount of staffing that we have. So that's the inpatient side. That's how it affects the trickle down there. On the outpatient side, it's great if you expand ED services, but if those patients don't have follow-up care, they're bouncing around the community, they're going to whatever urgent care ED has an open door to try to get a referral, to try to get in. Those referrals sit in a computer to then get triaged by the same two doctors who are up all night long, taking care of the mangled extremity that came in. It's just not a sustainable model. Those patients then have delayed care. Maybe you have a malunion, maybe you have a nonunion. That's a much more complicated problem to take care of, requires even more resources than if it was just done right the first time. So those are my primary concerns, and I hope that we will find a good solution and make sure that people don't end up in a worse situation than they should be.
Thank you, Dr. Castillo. Last but not least, Dr. Patricia Salmon. She's the President-elect of our Medical Leadership Council at Valley Medical Center and also the Chief of Adult Endocrinology at Valley Medical.
Thank you, Dr. Macbeth. I come to you as not only an endocrinologist who's worked at Santa Clara Valley Medical Center for eleven years, but as the incoming President of the Medical Leadership Council of Santa Clara Valley Medical Center. As my colleagues have already alluded to, the impact of the change in services at Regional Medical Center will have far-reaching effects beyond the very obvious increases in emergency department volume and hospital admissions due to loss of the trauma and STEMI programs at Regional Medical Center. It's also important to note that patients typically do not present with just one medical condition, which is quickly stabilized and resolved, but typically have multidisciplinary needs both in the hospital and upon discharge. So we anticipate that nearly all medical and surgical specialties will experience an increase in demand for care. And I say this because this is not merely speculation. We have already seen a large increase in demand for our specialty services at Valley Medical Center and O'Connor Hospital due to the loss of gastroenterology and nephrology specialty coverage at Regional Medical Center. In twenty twenty-three, coinciding with the loss of gastroenterology coverage at Regional Medical Center, Valley Medical Center experienced a forty percent increase in the number of inpatient gastroenterology consults. In addition, they experienced a forty percent increase in the number of these gastroenterology procedures requiring the assistance of anesthesiologists. I bring this up because this means that there's been a significant increase in the complexity of the cases. So these patients require additional resources in order to receive safe and quality care. So in order to meet the increased hospital demand that we anticipate from the change in services at Regional Medical Center, we were going to have to shift our resources from the outpatient setting to the inpatient setting. As has been said, we cannot, in the next six months, adequately increase our staffing to meet all of these demands. So by moving our staff from the inpatient, from the outpatient side to the inpatient side, that means there will be a reduction in availability for ambulatory services. So this will impact patients, you know, not only who had had traumas, STEMI's or strokes that may have previously been cared for at Regional Medical Center. This will impact all of the patients seeking care through the Santa Clara Valley Health System. Currently, we already have about thirty percent of our specialty clinics with limited access for new patient visits. And so in order to maintain the high quality of care that our patients deserve, we redirect many patients outside of the system. So we can only anticipate that this will increase, most obviously in services such as cardiology and neurology as it relates to the STEMI and stroke programs, as well as our surgical specialties. However, as I mentioned, these patients are typically complex. And so you may imagine that a patient who comes in with, for instance, a penetrating trauma, may also develop other associated injuries such as kidney injury and require nephrology services. They may also have diabetes and need to come to my clinic for care. So we can anticipate that nearly every specialty will be impacted by these closures. And just to speak a little bit more to the closure of the STEMI program, as has already been been mentioned, patients will then need to be redirected to other facilities. Now, while our EMS system will know where patients need to be directed, we know that many patients will self-present to the emergency department. I know Regional Medical Center will continue to do everything possible to stabilize the patient and transport them to an appropriate center. But we know that it's been shown in in multiple studies that the the travel time to a STEMI-capable center is associated with an increase in mortality. So increasing travel time, that factors into what we call the door-to-balloon time, the time it takes from when you arrive at a hospital to when we can provide your treatment intervention with angioplasty and stenting, as previously mentioned. Already, the goal is for that time to be ninety minutes or less. But that ideally should include the travel time it took the patient to get to the hospital center. So the increase in travel time is likely to have a negative effect on our patients. Next slide. And finally, the loss of the comprehensive stroke center at RMC will have similar impact on our patients, just as door-to-balloon time is important for our STEMI patients, so is time to revascularization for our stroke patients. You know, time is brain is what we always tell our patients. And so that means that increased burden will fall upon the other comprehensive stroke centers in the county, which will further limit capacity for future transfers that would have been cared for by Regional Medical Center. But as all of my colleagues have mentioned, everyone at Santa Clara Valley Healthcare remains committed to this community and providing the highest quality of care possible, regardless of the ability to pay. And we look forward to the county's ongoing support to meet this mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salmon. We're happy to to entertain any questions, but I know there are others who want to speak too, so.
Yeah, I thank you, Dr. Macbeth, and to your colleagues. And I do appreciate all of the information that you presented to us in terms of impacts. And I did want to allow the opportunity for any of the analysts to ask follow-up questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
If it would be a good time, okay, yeah, let me explore, if you think with you, if I could. So the communities that Regional Medical Center serves certainly are historically those that have reduced access to healthcare. How would you characterize, you know, the disproportionality in in access to care, particularly for the three services that are being changed, you know, trauma, stroke and STEMI?
So I I think, you know, those communities directly in the kind of neighborhoods So I think, you know, those communities directly in the kind of neighborhoods around Regional that they draw from, we know that there are higher rates of chronic disease to start with, so diabetes, hypertension, chronic medical needs and less access to primary care, that's a baseline. And so, you know, there are going to be more, you know, cardiovascular disease, as Dr. Salmon mentioned, is number one killer in the U.S. Today, we know that there are high rates of, of higher rates of STEMI in chronic disease populations. And we know that need's going to be there. And like she was making the point, longer transport times, certainly with trauma too. We, Dr. Garland was making the the observation, which is accurate, that penetrating trauma from the east side is significant and that's going to increase our volume. These are our communities that that struggle for access, that have higher disease burdens for chronic disease, but also, you know, significant substance impairment and other kind of social determinants that that provide additional challenges. So we we embrace, again, the the safety net that we provide, but but it's a lot of additional patients will be coming our way. We want to serve those communities and we do serve those communities, but we have to be realistic about the timeframe to ramp up our services to meet the needs.
Okay. I think your your last speaker addressed this, began to address this, but we've been focusing on on acute care. Do you see, what changes do you see in ambulatory care associated with these three services being cut back?
Yeah, maybe I'll ask Dr. Salmon to come back for a moment to it. I would observe, like she mentioned, that we are already seeing the effects of this in terms of the renal and GI need for care. So our dialysis needs for ambulatory care, hemodialysis patients, renal consults, GI procedures outpatient have gone up already. And and obviously, those aren't the specific services that we're talking about today, but we've seen the impact already from the limitation and and lack of availability of on-call services to the ED at Regional and their inability to take care of patients with these complex medical needs at at their site.
So as I mentioned, I think probably every specialty will be impacted. As Dr. Macbeth said, these patients are more likely to have multiple product medical conditions that will require follow-up. And in order to meet the standards of care that we think are appropriate for these patients, we'll likely have to redirect many patients outside of the Valley Medical Center's health system to our private colleagues and partners so that they can receive that timely care. I'm sure the care they will receive is excellent, but anytime you're transitioning patients from one, you know, medical center to another, there's always the concern that you're going to fragment their care, that even with the best intention, information is lost, studies may need to be duplicated, there may be delays. And so, you know, we would much rather keep all of our patients within our system so that we can provide collaborative, multidisciplinary care. So that would be the immediate consequence.
And just to to put an emphasis on one of Dr. Castillo's points about the challenges with the ambulatory care for surgical specialty follow-up, that's significant as well, right? So not only the acute care, but the needs after the discharge, so the needs for ongoing appointments and clinic visits. And and it's not such an easy thing to just ramp up and see more ED patients over at Regional and expect that they're going to have easy access to that specialty care that they're going to need.
Okay, very good, thank you. We've been exploring, you know, the ST elevation, myocardial infarction patients, so interventional cardiology. Do you see effects on on cardiology beyond STEMI care?
Yes, certainly. So we we know just a little bit about the the plans for limitation of the cath lab more broadly at at Regional. So certainly, we're here talking about STEMI's, which are a significant subset of cardiovascular acute presentations, but you have patients coming in with acute coronary syndromes that are not STEMI's, so but are not stable for discharge and need other services. They need diagnostic cardiac adaptations, they need interventions with angioplasties and stents and so forth. And our our sense is that those services are also going to be limited at Regional. And if the hospital is limiting all those things, it's going to mean reduction in ability to take care of cardiovascular patients, to admit them there. And again, the the cascade of effects, the request for increased transfers, the ambulance effects, wait times, and all those things kind of fall from there. So reduction of services generally are are going to have a wider effect than just the STEMI receiving center component.
And similar then to to stroke, you know, we've been exploring patients with stroke-like symptoms who would be candidates perhaps for thrombolysis. Thrombectomy is part of the the care spectrum at comprehensive centers, but there's more to it than that. You know, what other things might you imagine to be to be a loss as a comprehensive, you know, stroke center?
Well, I think it's it's kind of a double hit in this area. I think Dr. Nelson was making that point too, that that we as a system don't have within Santa Clara Valley Healthcare a comprehensive center at present. And so we have transferred to Regional, really relied on Regional as a comprehensive center for thrombectomy cases, for large vessel occlusions that need that specialized care, for subarachoid hemorrhage and neurosurgical interventions that that we currently can't provide. So again, with both the withdrawal of that receiving center for for patients within our system and other hospitals too, not specific to our system, and also those patients from Regional needing to go out to other centers, it's it's a double hit in terms of the reduction of that that specialized service and and their significant volumes, certainly.
Okay, one last thought, if I may. In in the last, in the last few years, there's been reductions in inpatient pediatrics by by Regional, I mean now. In inpatient pediatrics, labor and delivery, at least reductions in gastroenterology and nephrology, and now in interventional cardiology, endovascular neurology and and trauma. How would you reconcile the the difference or the the argument that increasing the ED size, you know, would be would compensate for or not compensate, would somehow be imbalanced with, you know, the loss of those services?
You know, as an ED physician, I think it would be an incredibly difficult place to work. And I think Dr. Nelson was making that point because the reality is you see patients coming in every day who need those services, right? And I think that was made by, that point was driven home by the whole panel, like whether it's trauma or cardiovascular care or any of the other areas. You know, pediatric patients come into Regional all the time. And 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 so, you know, with the the reduction in those services, it becomes very difficult to provide the care that patients need and deserve when they present. And, you know, it it's it's a challenge. We've seen in other states, I think, just to bring up the example of a freestanding ED that kind of operates in a vacuum and and tries to stabilize patients and and transfer out the the admits that are required. I think that's a very difficult model to sustain and it really relies on other centers being able to take that volume. Now, I know Regional's not, you know, putting itself forward, but as you cut service after service, and and you're right to bring up the pediatric and OB service lines as well, these are significant hits to the community. These are deeply concerning when they happen and these additional cuts now are are going to be, have huge impact, I think, across the county.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. So thank you again, Dr. Macbeth, and your colleagues from Santa Clara Valley Healthcare. We're going to move to the stakeholder and public comment period of the hearing now. I understand from our clerk that we have three speaker cards submitted from those in chambers. If you have not submitted a yellow speaker card and would like to speak, please feel free to do so. You can obtain a speaker card from the clerk who is sitting in the back, who's holding up the yellow speaker card now. We're going to start with individuals who are in chambers and would like to speak in person. And then we're going to move to the public speakers who are on Zoom. So if you'd like to speak and you are on Zoom, please raise your hand to indicate to the clerk that you would like to speak.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any additional movement towards the clerk in the back, so I will call the three cards that I have in my possession. As I call your name, please approach the aisle in any order and then you'll be able to approach the podium and give your testimony. I have Edgar Mentes, Richard Klein, and Shari Mosley.
Hi, how are you? My name is Edgar Pimentel. I guess I'm probably the only one from the community here. So it's kind of, it's kind of hard to hear that they're closing down certain services. A couple of years ago, I took my aunt, she was having a stroke and I'm the one that noticed it. I drove her down, she lives in that community. Had it been further out, from what the doctor said, it would have been a lot worse. So the drive from there, from where she lives, on White Road to where the Regional is at, was an actual catch. Had it been, well, there's no services there, there's no attendant in there, we have to go to Valley Medical, she would have had worse, she probably would have been paralyzed. So they caught it fast and it was taken care of. My grandmother got transferred a couple of days ago to O'Connor because there's normal services for what she had at Regional, that was her regional hospital. So I don't think the community really knows what really is going on. It's a minority, it's a, the area is a minority community. And I don't think they know because I think there will be a lot more people here speaking on behalf of that. If you close down that area, nobody thinks, especially living in that area, oh, something's wrong with this person. Let me, what's closest to us? Most people say Regional's always been there. If you live in San Jose, Regional, San Jose Medical used to be there, Valley Medical took over that. So there's a lot of things that go on, but just considering, oh, my, somebody's having a heart attack. I've had that where I was in my vehicle and I felt like I was having that. I didn't think, oh, Valley Medical is the only one that has those services. I'm thinking Regional's close to me, I'm just going to drive there. Or whoever I was with, they drove me there and that's, I just think that closing down that area, like these doctors I've spoken of, it'll be crazy for everybody. I don't think the community really knows until you're actually there or you're loved one, you don't have a choice, you said this is what's closer to me. You're not going to say, whoa, let's go where they have the services. You go where there's an emergency, that's where you go there. So I hope you guys take that into consideration on behalf of the whole community, not just me speaking here, just coincidentally, I heard about it and I said, there's nobody here to speak on behalf of the community at all. So thank you for hearing me out and thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Richard Klein. I practiced trauma surgery here in San Jose for 30 years now. I started at San Jose Hospital, moved over to Regional Medical Center when the trauma service moved there. I've been the medical director there from between 2007 and 2023 for the trauma services. And I want to first state that those of us who work at Regional Medical Center are committed to providing services for the community. And I do want to thank Lisa and the EMS agency for pointing out that map. There's been a lot of comments and I'm not, and all of them are true. This does impact the community quite a bit. But the map kind of tells the story. Everything's lined up on the west side. We know what that means. It means that this is all about money. It's hard to sustain the care for these patients. We've heard that it's difficult for Valley Medical Center to recruit and hire physicians to take care of these, this large volume of patients. These are the most vulnerable patients that are out there. Regional has the same problem. And they aren't allowed to hire physicians. They have to recruit physicians and put up large contracts to keep them there. Otherwise, where do they go? To the west side. This is not a choice that anyone wants to make. And if there is a way to change this, some sort of public-private venture project or whatever, please, if anyone has ideas, come up and open that dialogue. You know, as a medical staff, I know we would welcome it, the hospital would welcome it, but there needs to be a novel solution to this problem because the population that they're serving over on the east side is not sustaining this hospital in its current form. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Welcome the next speaker.
Okay, hi, my name is Sherry Mosley and I work at Regional Medical Center. I've been over there for 20 years. I lived in the community for 44 years. When that hospital used to be Alexium Brothers, then they changed to Regional when HCA bought it. So I know the community over there. I live in that community. I know that hospital, I work in that hospital. So yes, it's it's going to affect a lot of people over in that community because I have relatives, friends that goes to that hospital and, you know, stroke patients that I know, neighbors that's sick, that goes over there is is right across the street, right across the street. And for us to transfer over to Valley when they do this closure closure right now, it's going to be hard. It's really going to be hard because the different departments that did close already over there. Now we're talking about the stroke, the STEMI and the trauma. Yeah, they're going to span the trauma, I'm excuse me, they're going to span the ER, but what about the other departments? For the time that it takes to some Regional to go over to Valley, either O'Conners. So, yeah, I think it's going to affect a whole lot of people in that community too, like the other gentleman said. We don't think the community know about this. And I'm going to put it out there because what they need to be here to talk about what's going on in that, at that hospital. That's how I look at it. So, you know, that's, I just feel like right now, where else everybody going to go at? I mean, yeah, it's going to be a hospital there, but we're just going to be a big old urgent care because what's the service? You don't have no service there. Once they close all those service, what's left? What's fully left to the hospital? So they might as well make it a big ass, excuse me, a big old urgent care. Thank you.
Thank you. Those were the three speakers that submitted cards in chambers. We do have some hands raised in Zoom. We currently have four hands raised. I'll begin calling the names. We have a user by the name Shay Zatsamio. Please accept the unmute. And you may begin your three-minute comments.
Hi, my name is Shazad. I live on the east side. Regional is my local and closest hospital where my family or I would go if you needed emergency care. My girlfriend is an ER doctor at Regional and also at Valley Medical Center. She is scared to speak up because she is worried she will be fired, just like they recently fired the trauma surgeon at Regional who wrote the article in the Mercury Times about how closing services at Regional means patients will die. Patients are dying there already due to lack of services. Too many times, I have watched my girlfriend come home after shift at Regional crying because her patient died due to lack of services at Regional. Regional already does not have GI or nephrology services. They closed labor and delivery several years ago as well. Currently, pregnant patients, dialysis patients, patients with GI bleeds, all have to be transferred to other hospitals, which often means they sit in the Regional ED for hours to days while my girlfriend is trying to keep them alive until they can be transferred. There are patients that have died waiting. More will die in the planned closure of stroke, trauma, and STEMI services. These are all the time sensitive conditions and now these patients will have to be transported to other hospitals further away. This transport time will increase the morbidity and mortality of these patients and will overwhelm other hospitals, especially Valley Medical Center. HCA, which is the publicly traded company that owns Regional, only cares about money. Last year in 2023, HCA made $23 billion in profit. Regional operates at a financial loss for HCA. As a result, HCA is gutting the place and closing down these services. The east side is where the most vulnerable, most underserved patients in Santa Clara County live. Regional is their closest hospital and this is the community I live in. Closing these services will devastate my community, all so that HCA can make more profit. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker in the queue is Raj Gupta. Please accept the unmute. You may begin your testimony.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Raj Gupta. I'm ex-president of medical staff at Regional and I am also Santa Clara County Medical Association Counselor for Regional. and I am also Santa Clara County Medical Association Counselor for Regional. I have been told there are deep consequences of public testimonies, but, you know, I think it is my duty to speak in the public forum. I'm in the area for the last 18 years, and I have seen a lot of things at Regional. I can tell you from my personal experience, termination of these programs would severely impact the underserved community of East San Jose. Imagine transporting critically sick patients to sister facility Good Samaritan Hospital, which is 14.7 miles away with unpredictable traffic conditions, would be a decision between life and death. In the pandemic times, I was the chief of staff there. When the community had highest number of COVID-19 patients, Good Samaritan did not accept most of the patients. It has taken 37 years for trauma program and 20 years for stroke and cardiology programs to reach to this level. It would be a huge loss to the local community. Arjuning hospitals will be put under tremendous pressure to meet this demand. Loss of experienced physicians would be forced to leave the local area. And on top of that, some of the things people have not under haven't realized that yet. In the past, there's a precedent. 10 years ago, RMC closed down pediatrics. About four years ago, they terminated OB-GYN, labor delivery, and neonatal units. If we let them to close these programs also, health equity and diversity would be impacted severely. Health entities should not selectively choose what essential services they should provide and which one they should not. There was a reason and need for these programs to be built in the first place. And there's no change in ground realities. I I can tell you, you know, a lot of physicians in MEC and Board of Trustees, they were not part of this decision. In fact, they were kept in dark. There was a retreat done on November last year where ideas were asked to improve the services at RMC in the presence of corporate leaders, including President Far West, Division Jackie, Juan Blackroom. All the decisions and discussions were duly noted, but not acted on. We had no inkling this is what is coming on. You know, one other thing I would tell the public, we don't have a real Board of Trustees at RMC. They are only with credentialing and quality maintenance. Real Board sits at Nashville, and they are the one who take all the decision, including termination of these programs.
Thank you so much for your comments. We have another speaker in Zoom with a phone number ending in 2214. Please accept the unmute by pressing star six.
This is Dr. Sadeki. Hi, this is Dr. Sadeki. I'm traveling in Medina right now, but it's 2:00 AM. I would like to participate in this very important discussion. I am currently the Director of Cardiac Cath Lab at Regional Medical Center. I've been the Cardiac Cath Lab Director for a previous hospital, San Jose Medical Center. And this transition, which was brought on us, is going to have tremendous problems in the community. For the last three years, Regional Medical Center has been serving the community for acute coronary syndrome or STEMI program. We had 110 STEMI's every year, the largest in the Santa Clara County. This year alone, we had 30 STEMI's in the first quarter. And the problem with that situation is 60% of those STEMI's, acute heart attacks, they are walk-ins. So even after closure of the core heart STEMI program, 60 people would show up in the emergency room at Regional Medical Center without an active cath lab. That puts a direct impact on patients and the local community. And without lack of without without cardiology or interventional cardiology, those patients would be at the highest risk of dying from it in a city which is in Santa Clara County, not in the boonies. So the Santa Clara County has to step up because, you know, the real estate in Santa Clara County is very expensive. So Santa Clara is Clara County's problem, or the richest counties in the country. They have to step up and meet the demands of the community. If the ACA wants to bail out, county has to come in. And I think please take this advice very seriously because this will have serious impact on on the on the people who live in and around the area. The second act is most of the transfer that came in Santa Clara Hospital are from Hollister, Gilroy, and and the hospitals in between. Where will they go? Who will who will cover them? So, do we have four months or maybe three months? I request the Board of Advisors of Santa Clara County to step up. And that's your job, and use the money that we pay in our property taxes, which is humongous. So please take this advice very seriously because otherwise, you, me, and everybody else who lives in this very expensive county will have some serious consequences. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the last hand that's raised in Zoom, Fong Nguyen, MD. Please accept the unmute, and you may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, members of the boards and the public. My name is Fong Nguyen. I'm the Chief Medical Officer at Santa Clara Valley Healthcare. Regretfully, I'm unable to be in the chamber today with you and my colleagues who have spoken to you in regard to this issue. Regional Medical Center proposed plan to abruptly shut down the trauma, STEMI, and comprehensive stroke program will have significant negative impact to the public and to public safety. Contrary to Regional Medical Center reassuring, the transition of these critical services for the majority of patients who would normally access Regional will be with significant disruption. This will undoubtedly result in delay in care, exacerbating patient suffering and leading to preventable morbidity and mortality. As my colleagues have shared, the proposed closure timeline does not allow for an adequate response from our health system as we currently lack the necessary resources, including physician specialists, staffing, infrastructure, and facility to absorb the increased demand for both inpatient and outpatient essential services. The sudden loss of these vital services at Regional will disproportionately impact our already underserved communities, worsening the existing healthcare disparities. Vulnerable patients will face even greater challenges in accessing timely and life-saving medical care. Personally, as someone who has lived in East San Jose and who still has an elderly father residing just a few block away from Regional Medical Center, it saddened me to consider that community members, much like my father, will encounter delays in emergency medical care. Thank you for this opportunity to add to my colleagues' comment and thoughts.
Thank you. That was our last Zoom speaker at this time.
So when I understand that subsequent to taking public comment in the chambers, we had another individual who submitted a speaker card. So if that individual would like to come forward, and I also want to take the opportunity at this time to put out the call again for any anyone interested in providing public comment, whether you are in person, please feel free to fill out a yellow speaker card that you can get at the back of the board chambers. Or if you are on Zoom, I understand from the clerk that we have quite a robust participation of people who are watching this hearing on Zoom. So if you would like to raise your hand and provide public comment, please feel free to do so at this time.
Thank you. We have Varun Kapoor. Please feel free to approach the podium.
Dear Board of Supervisors, I'm a trauma surgeon and ICU physician at Regional Medical Center. I work in the emergency room, the operating room, the ICU, and the hospital floors. You have heard a very well robust statement with hard data and facts from our colleagues at the Valley Medical Health. You have heard from my colleagues at Regional Medical Center and their relatives about how strongly we feel about keeping our services open for the most marginalized population in the county. I shared my views in the Mercury News two weeks ago. And the week since I wrote my opinion, I've had multiple providers, doctors, nurse practitioners, nurses, respiratory therapists, reach out to me on social media, in person, call, text, and stop and share the gratitude for bringing this up. They shared that they grew up in this county. This hospital used to be, I quote, "a beacon of hope for the East San Jose community." And when I see the hospital, I see a lot of potential. And I invite you to visit the hospital and see for yourself. The hospital has a huge footprint, a big building, and we need to build up the services and not strip them down. We need your support to build it and return it to its competent state, which it was there even a few years ago. We need you to deliver safe and effective patient care. The county needs you. And please do not take away the right to equitable healthcare for your most marginalized constituents in Santa Clara County. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I do see two hands raised. I believe one of those who has their hands raised already gave testimony. So there is an additional hand who has not spoken yet by the name of Darryl McLeanahan. Forgive me if I'm mispronouncing that. Please accept the unmute. You may be give your you may give your testimony.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Darryl McLeanahan. I'm the Regional Director for American Medical Response, which is the county's contracted 911 ambulance provider. So currently in Santa Clara County, we provide about 130,000 emergency responses a year for for patients who are initiating access to healthcare through the 911 system. And Regional Medical Center receives a large portion of our trauma, STEMI, and stroke patients that are transported by ambulance. And that accounts for all of the patients who require specialty care. It's about 18% of our patients who require specialty care go there. So currently, but there are system challenges before any changes. Are we we have similar to to other healthcare entities have have experienced a significant increase in EMS call volume, which is an increase in people utilizing 911 system for initial access to care. And we do have a an extended delay of hospital patient wall times where where ambulances wait for for with a patient for a long period of time before transferring care to emergency department. So through our assessment of these closures, we're going to continuously assess these impacts. And we don't have we we don't have all of the assessment finalized. And that's due in in part that largely the services that that are provided are a framework of administrative processes through medical direction, through through the EMS agency. We'll work in partnership with with the EMS agency on what that looks like, and we stand ready to adapt and and change to that. But what our primary focus will be is is to try and not significantly impact current challenges to hospital wall times. And we do foresee some some other impacts, increased patient distance, including out-of-county transports or or in-county transports to a further distance. This will also have an impact to change in patient destination of preference or of need. And again, as we evaluate all of this, we'll make sure that we continuously evaluate and try and mitigate any unforeseen circumstances. So that that that's that's all I have. No less than basically.
Thank you very much. That was the last speaker in Zoom that indicated they wish to speak that had not already previously spoken.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, with that, then, we'll close the public comment period. And I just want to turn to any of the panelists here with me from the EMS agency for any closing remarks before we conclude.
From the EMS agency, I would like to thank everybody here in the chambers and online. We will document everyone's comments. We will also document all the letters that we have received that will go into the final impact summary report. All of that report will be forwarded to the California Department of Health Services, the Emergency Medical Services Authority, and our Board of Supervisors. We will be attending the April 16th Board of Supervisors. And after that board meeting, this assessment will be available to all of our stakeholders. It will be how we get it out. We will be sending it to the primary stakeholders, and it will be on our website. But again, we do want to thank everyone for your participation and comments, and wish you drive safely and have a good evening.
I'll also say thank you as well, and we began planning to adjust the MS system.
Well, thank you all for coming, both in person and those who participated online. Thank you for your input and have a good evening. Thank you.